Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the panel select board office on this Thursday, September tenth, a special meeting. On the agenda tonight is the phone call coming in. Rosemary Pelletier, RE, the FEMA flood map changes, animal control, town website update, and town office walkway.
Move to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
Yep.
All those in favor? Okay. Okay, number one, Rosemary Pelletier, you are up. Good evening and welcome.
I'm here, I raised a question at panel planning commission.
Just excuse me a minute. Chris, do you want to shut that air conditioner off if it's going to affect your audio? So sometime, there's a remote control right up here. Oh, there you go. One you're tall, I guess you don't need a remote control. I guess that'll, that'll help your audio out a little bit. I'm sorry, Rosemary, but I just want to make sure that everybody's heard.
Okay. And I'm chair of the panel planning commission. And at our last meeting, we were, you know, part of the things we're looking at are flood resiliency and things like that. And there was a meeting in Bennington on September 2nd, and I asked the members of the committee if they were aware of it, if anybody was going, and how people knew about the meeting. And it's mostly published just through the newspaper. And a lot of people don't get the banner. I went to the meeting and spoke with Ned Swansburg, and he's with the state of Vermont with regard to this. And I asked him how people were to find out about this, and he said they only do it through the public media, and nothing is sent directly to individual people to notify them of the changes in the flood map that are coming. And it's extremely important because what's happening with the new flood maps that'll come out in December is that a lot of people who were in areas that were low risk, and therefore their flood insurance wasn't that high, not that, I mean, flood insurance is high, but it wasn't real high, are going to now be in high-risk zones. And so their flood insurance after December is going to skyrocket. And they're going to be blindsided because they don't know this is coming down the question.
Rosemary, did they give you a percentage of an increase or anything like that?
They, they did not, but I spoke with one individual whose insurance more than doubled, is what they told her was, was going to happen. The, the reason I'm here is we have in Powell, because of the river, we have a lot of areas that are, are going to be affected, a lot of individual people. And I don't think they, there's, the feds and the state are not notifying people individually. They're just sending out these blanket information. So what I was coming to you with the idea is would the town be willing to underwrite the cost, which would be a mailing cost, of sending to the, a flyer that Ned said he would put together, that we could send to the people in Powell who would be affected? Because what they have to do is they have to go through a process that grandfathers their property in at the flood risk level they're at now, in order to maintain the rate schedule that they're on. And if they don't do this by December, then they're, they move into the zone that they are then in as of those new maps.
Well, that's, it's, it's good information. A couple of points I have, I'm curious as to why FEMA isn't directly notifying the people that they're responsible for, number one.
Yes.
However, I don't know, maybe Henry or somebody here would know, roughly how many people are affected within the town of Powell? If you, just give me a guess.
I don't, I don't know the numbers. I know it, it hits some of our high-density areas. Majority of it would be right along the 346 route where the river floods. And it, it actually goes up a bit onto North Powell Road, the map that I saw. What they're able to do is they sit down with the people one-on-one and show them where they are, where they are now, where, where their house is going to be in terms of if the zone changed, and can assist them in looking at insurance rates. They do that one-on-one with them. But my guess would be, I mean, if you think, I suspect the trailer parks that are down by the river are all affected, I would think probably most of the homes east, no, west of 346 would probably be involved in that.
I think there's a little over a hundred, hundred homes.
Okay, yeah, all right, yeah. Well, as long as the information.
A hundred homes plus a park, I think.
That may include the park as well.
Will that include the park?
What, what I'm thinking of is if you can come up with the pertinent information and, and, I don't, you know, of course, being selectmen, we want to protect the people of this town and, and keep them abreast of, of new regulations, et cetera. I, I personally don't have a problem with doing a mailing from the town. Gentlemen, I'll refer to you.
Well, I think the, let's find, let's find out what we're serving, you know, or how many people we're, we need to deal with. And it isn't so much how many homes. It's in what area? And if that is the only area, I don't think a mailing is too far.
Yeah, I don't think you have to do the general population.
To send them, because you, right off the bat, we'd go, we'd end up in bulk mailing. Am I doing that thought correctly?
Probably not if you target.
No? We don't do that no more?
No, like Rosemary said, you're going to target individuals.
What I can do is I can get a list.
If you can, if you can pull them, but I think that.
Ned can give me the list of the, the properties affected, not who lives there.
Okay.
But the addresses of the properties that are affected.
I mean, we could just address it to resident of 123.
Yes.
Home Street, whatever.
I think the important thing, too, is that we have information in that for people to, to references to call and questions. Because obviously, we're not going to be able to answer some of those questions as a board.
Right. It would, it would give them information on what's happening, deadlines. And I'll call him tomorrow and set up a time when he could bring his group of people down with the computers and stuff and maybe get the library or someplace like that.
And is this something you can spearhead as well, you know, to work with them?
I would be glad if, if the town is willing to do the financial piece of it and support it, then I would be glad.
We're talking about, again, this may be something, if it's in a PDF file, we may be able to run off a copier or, you know, rather than, you know, I don't want to go four, I don't want to go four-color, you know, high glossy paper, et cetera.
It's just to make sure they have the information.
Okay. So you'll work with whoever you need to from this office and FEMA?
Okay. And probably Linda, would that be you that I would work with or?
Probably myself and a lister.
A lister, okay.
Need to produce a mailing list.
Okay, I think Ned can give me the mailing list.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think we're going to need, you know, to get this, and a couple of meetings. And I think you said that those people would, would have a hearing or a, or a meeting or...
Right, what he would schedule, what they did in Bennington was they brought.
That's what I'm after, right there.
Yeah, they brought a group of people.
After the flyers.
After the flyer goes out, but the flyer would have a date for this meeting.
Okay, very good.
You know, I suspect that probably, yeah, the library could be used because it's got a wide library.
Or the school, whatever.
And they bring their own computers and the maps. And then they sit down one-on-one with the people who have come, so they'll call to make an appointment.
Okay, that'd be fine, okay.
So I don't think it'll require meetings.
That way we can talk about that right along with what the plan is.
So I guess I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion the select board approves to support it however we need to to get the railing out.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Next up on our agenda is animal control, Arvin Vincent.
I get to see, oh, there you go, I warmed it for you.
How are you tonight?
Well, how are you?
Good, good. Since I had been out, could you bring me up to speed a little bit on some of this?
I can. From what I know, we're look, still in the process of looking for a facility to hold stray animals.
The last meeting, the only contract I was able to, to get anybody to give to us was Wyndham County Humane Society. Nobody else was willing to, private kennels or otherwise was willing to. Brattleboro would think about it if I pressed it. So this is the contract that I presented the last time. And I just didn't know where you guys were at, what kind of decisions you had made in regard to kennel.
We haven't.
We haven't.
Yeah, we haven't made a decision on it. And who, who did you contact in your?
Did I, did I write any of that the last time? I didn't bring any of that stuff with me this time, I'm sorry.
They're the file holder, she did present the board with the list of research.
Paula, Paula, I cannot remember her last name.
Okay, so we're talking about.
This was, this, this was the only contract that I was able to obtain.
So you would have to transport the animals?
They would have to be transported to Wyndham County. I can reconnect with Brattleboro if you want. It's six and one, half a dozen of another, and it's the same distance in the other direction.
So this isn't the same as Brattleboro?
Because, I mean, this one says operating in Brattleboro.
Yeah, they operate in Brattleboro, I mean, it's.
So Brattleboro has two.
There's some private ones, but no, no, none of the private ones wanted to take the dogs. I couldn't find anybody, there's nobody around here that.
But again, but again, we get into the same situation, they're limited on their hours and, and, you know, to eight to five.
Well, that wasn't the issue with the other kennel. The other kennel was not like, this one was eight to five, that was between the hours of nine.
Sure, but that's something you could work with, I mean.
It's a long way to go.
Well, I thought we had a gentleman in here that saw he could keep these dogs.
Yes, and I wasn't here for that meeting either.
Where did it end up? Nothing, or what? Didn't accomplish anything, I don't believe.
You know.
He was going to do some research.
One of the big issues I have is trying to get ahold of you. I mean, I had an issue where I tried.
Were you calling the?
And your mailbox is full.
My personal phone?
Whatever number I have for you in the.
What number do you have for me? Because my per, my personal phone.
Isn't it listed in the town?
Yeah, that's my personal phone number.
Okay. Mailbox is full, I emailed you.
That's my personal phone, you need to call my work phone.
Well, why is that listed in the town, you know, why was that?
I don't know, I don't have any.
I mean, because it's, if it's in the town report and people need to get ahold of the ACO.
I get that, but the town report, I don't write it, so.
Okay, well.
That's, that's.
I mean, I, I emailed you, I, too, I emailed you, and I never got a response either way.
I don't, I don't know about the email, but I, I can tell you that I do not answer my, my personal phone.
Why do you have it?
I don't, I don't answer, unless I know who it is, I don't.
Oh, okay, well.
For, for personal reasons.
Okay. You know, I, I think there has to be more, somehow you have to be more reachable somehow.
I take all my calls.
Well, I think, I think the last time we met, as far as to taking care of the dogs, I mean, we hashed it all over if there was an emergency, don't you got them picked up? We decided, you know, you, you was looking for some guidance. And what we, what could we do with them if nobody wanted to take them? And we decided to take them to the vet's office.
Which is by, really expensive for you guys. I haven't had to, there's been no reason to do it.
I, I understand that, but I, I mean, I don't know what that is or what they're expensive, but I know to take a car from Powell to go to Brattleboro and transport these things, and in Jeep neither.
No, it's not.
Okay, you know, you know what I'm saying?
These are disentires that I always have to make.
Well, but it, it makes the whole program kind of out of whack. I mean, if, if there is an emergency, then.
If there's an emergency, it.
You know, how do you get them there? I mean, at least lo, at least locally here, you can, I mean, is that?
If there's an emergency, the dogs by law have to go to the vet anyways.
Right.
So that's where they would be.
Okay.
This, this, this is, this contract was about, if somebody called me and I said, okay, I'll come pick up the dog, and I can't find the owner in five days, by law, we have to hold them for five days, we don't want to hold them any longer than that.
Right.
Then you have a decision whether you can put them down or find a home for them, which is a whole nother, that's a whole nother realm. But these, these kennels are about holding a dog for five days by law until the owner is located, and if not, then the next decision has to be made.
Our former ACO had to travel many miles to go wherever he needed to go to bring animals, anywhere, upstate, cross-state, so this isn't anything that's new for Powell.
And I have brought animals north because we, I didn't have access to Great Fields.
At one point, there was a Pittsfield had, had, had come up. Pittsfield.
My understanding is we can't take these dogs across the state line.
Okay. And I'm not sure where that was in the discussion that, okay.
And Pittsfield from here, I.
I think is a lot closer than Brattleboro, if it's, if that's the case, I don't know.
I have to look at the mileage up on my phone, I don't know. I don't know how far, it's pretty far.
About forty-five minutes.
Well, how Brattleboro would be?
About forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I think it would be about the same in the other direction.
Arvin, what, what is the phone number you can be reached at for the people out there in case they do have an animal control issue?
Right up there, 802-379-8771.
Yep, that's it. Eight oh two, yeah, 379-8771, I just never call it.
That's the town.
The one that's in there, I think, is the 413 number.
It is?
Yeah.
We have to make sure that that gets changed with the next town report.
And I do think a public notice went out when we, when we got my, my work phone, and that's been a while.
Yeah, we announced a couple of notices.
This was, this was printed, you know, before that work phone was given to me.
Okay. Well, what do you want to do here, fellas? I mean, we have to guide our ACO here as to.
We've got to do something. It seems like we've been carrying on and carrying on and carrying on, but, you know.
But what, what is the answer here? Is it Brattleboro, is it, is this, you know, I hate to say temporary.
I'm going to tell you. It just seems to me that in this area, that there isn't a place to take care of these animals.
Where is it?
I don't, have no idea.
Me neither, and I don't think any of us do.
Now, did we ever look into other towns where, where they're going?
Yeah.
Where, where did they go?
Great Fields.
That's what Arvin was tasked to research, and she brought back a list of all the kennels and whatnot in the area that were willing or could or couldn't take animals.
What, what is the law? I have to look it up if we're taking animals across the state line.
I have to really check into that, it's the whole reason about shots and things. You know, I don't know where it falls as far as the ACO part of it, but.
Because the other thing I was thinking, Adams, Massachusetts has a kennel.
All I have is, all I have, Arvin, is Vermont law.
Yeah, I have this, I have to, I'd have to look at the, my understanding was.
The excerpt from the animal welfare regulations for cats and dogs.
This is the whole law right here.
Care, treatment, and transportation of the dogs.
Probably doesn't talk about crossing state.
Yeah, I, you know, I would have to consult the people at the state because my understanding is they weren't supposed to be crossed over. And I guess my question would be legally, with my position, if I could do that. You know, a citizen can do it. But I don't know, as working for a municipality, whether I can do it.
Yeah, I want to do the question.
See, also in House here, care and transit, which is the, on the last page, "It shall be the responsibility of the attendant or driver to inspect the animals frequently, determine whether they need emergency veterinary care, and if so, to obtain such care at the earliest opportunity." That's all it says as far as.
That's the transportation part of it, yeah.
Right.
But that's not the empowerment part of it.
No.
The transportation part of it and the empowerment part of it are two different things, and I don't know it. I can, I can put a phone call into the state tomorrow and find out where I stand on that. And it just, as we were sitting here, I was remembering that Adams, Massachusetts does have a facility. I don't know whether they would work with us, but maybe that is another direction we could go.
I mean, I, I think any, any facility that takes in dogs and cats, strays, whatever, they almost have the same guideline with, they don't have, probably have to get a kennel cough shot, you know, or re-isolated, things like that. I would assume that whether it's here in Powell, or Bennington, or Shasberg, or Arlington, I'm pretty much sure that no matter where you take them to, that all these places have a standard set of rules.
Well, they, they isolate them, and what I think, and I don't know what you would end up doing, is having to, and here's where you run into money, too, because if I have to transport a dog and it needs, for example, a rabies shot, before, for example, if Adams, Massachusetts, if that worked out, and I, that means I would have to go up to West Mountain or a vet, you'd end up paying an emergency call to have that rabies shot done in order to transport that dog. So I, I would have to give you a pretty in-depth report after I call the state and find out whether that's something that I can do. There are a couple of vets around that would work with us, I am sure. I am sure.
I mean, but some of those things, we don't have a choice in doing anyhow.
Well, what I'm trying to say is you, I wouldn't want to be spending the money to have to have an emergency call every time I had to transport a dog.
How often do you have to?
Not very often.
Not very often. If, you, you've been here roughly a year, right, or more?
Two years.
Two years? Roughly, off the top of your head, how many calls do you get a year? Would you say?
I probably get, it depends, it, it comes and goes with, a lot of calls are, can you, does a dog loose, can you come and get it? By the time, I've learned by the time I get there, they're gone, unless somebody actually has them. Since we haven't had a kennel to put them in, I've probably had about ten calls of, I've got a dog, you know, can you come and get it? And I, I have no place to put it, I can't take it, and what, it's interesting, people end up really finding the owners.
So I mean, we're not dealing with a large amount, but it's, it's something that has to be addressed.
Well, and I do see in this here, I mean, Wyndham County's looking at a fee of $250 a year.
Right.
To be there, to be the exclusive.
Right.
Holding facility for us.
And the rest of it's the same, the contract is the same as the other ones because of the, you know, the state law is the state law, as far as, you know, you have to bring it to the vet and all of that, but bringing it across state lines, I'd have to research. And it is a long way.
If we want their dog back, they're on a pay board.
Right, that's right.
I don't know, but here's the way I'm looking at it. Is it worth it for you, Arva, to do a little more research on this, to call Adams, to find out what the transportation is between?
Yeah, because I'd rather not have to drive to Brattleboro.
I don't blame you, you know.
I mean, that's two hours, never mind anything else.
We have, we have New York State right over here, too. What's, what's, is there something in Kuzic, Kuzic Falls, or anything?
No.
Nothing?
They, they at least have county shelters.
Right, right. I can try.
I mean, all they can tell us is no, you know, but, you know, we would, we would be willing to pay our way, you know, but I, I mean, there's, we do border New York State. I would, what I'd like you to do is find out from Massachusetts, find out from Vermont if it's legal to transport an animal across borders, and find out if there's anything available close by here in the state of New York. See what the laws are. Could you do that research? And, and I hate to do this, fellas, but I, I don't want to make a decision.
Like, well, you're not, you're not hurting my feelings, are you?
I'd rather have the information.
I'll put it in your boxes.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm sitting here, not really knowing what to do.
Because Adams would be great, I mean, if we could do Adams.
And I know that they have a full-time animal control guy that's down there all the time feeding dogs, so, and they have a kennel, and it's right down by the wastewater treatment plant.
I mean, I think you also have to, like the question I asked.
But I don't know whether I can do it.
I know, but let's, best-case scenario, they say, yeah, well, you know, yeah, we can do this. How many dogs a year do you, like you said, maybe ten? You, maybe you're talking one a month?
You know, we would be probably twenty dogs a year max if you bring them in.
Okay, max, okay. That's where we're going to have to rely on you because none of us have that information. You know your job better than anybody else.
Yep.
Okay? So you're going to be our salesperson.
Thank you.
Okay? To.
I will, I will start with the state.
Okay, all right, and.
Because if I can't, if I can't do it, then we're back to square one.
Is a, a month a fair amount of time?
Oh, absolutely. I'll try to do it this week, actually, I'll throw something in your.
Well, the reason is I'd like to get you on, get you on an agenda. How many weeks do you think you need, Arva? Three?
Yeah, that's fine.
How about could we do like, I think, maybe the October 1st, or, yeah, October 1st?
Does that give us three weeks?
I can't do it on October 1st, I have a huge test I'm sitting for.
It'd be three weeks.
How about after that?
Yeah, anytime after that.
I mean, it isn't that we, it isn't that we, it may cost some money, but we are set up at the moment to deal with the issues as far as dogs are.
Yeah, if I have to bring them to the vet.
That's right. I mean.
Again, again, keeping in mind that if the kennels are full with paying customers.
Well, I don't know that, but.
We don't have a contract, so we can't.
Well, we'll have to, the only way you're going to know that is just to give a call and ask the questions.
Right, but I, I can't afford, I can't take a dog, you know what I'm saying? It still leaves us in the same place.
Right.
Well, we'll, we'll try to remedy, remedy this as quickly as we can, depending on what kind of information we come back with.
I'll try to do that.
I mean, we've had a couple of situations where we've had some, a couple of lost dogs, and between all of us working cooperatively together, we've somehow managed to get it back to the owners.
Which is usually the case.
Which is usually the case.
Yeah.
Sometimes it takes, you know, putting feelers out, you know, whatever you got to do.
I mean, I've only had, since I've been doing this and for two years, I've only had one dog that I've had to put down.
Okay.
Because I, I hate it.
And that's beyond, I mean, our control. I mean.
There's nothing you can do about that.
Yeah, you have to do what you have to do.
And I just, once again, I just want to go over this, that if you do have to reach the animal control officer.
Right, yeah.
Do not use.
Do not use my personal.
Number in the, the town report, you won't get anywhere, so 379-8771. Thank you, Arva.
Okay.
And as always, if there's a problem, please call the select man's office because I can text Arva, and I'm able to gather, I'm able to email her. I don't have any communication problems.
No, I did, but obviously I was calling the wrong number and.
Yeah, I do not answer.
I mean, Arva did come in and tell the board that, you know, I need a phone.
Well, I think anybody out there that has the problem between, what, nine, nine to 5:30 in the afternoon, call the town office. Right? I mean, you're here, I mean, or close by anyway, you know, you know what I'm trying to say, Linda, or close by, okay? So that.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'll get back to you when I have that information.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is the town website.
I don't see Amy, so.
Can you?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what I know, okay? I have been working, I did have one meeting with Amy, and she walked me through some of the steps on the website. She asked for a lot of information that we wanted to have put on the website from individuals, minutes, some things, we talked about what should be there, what we could, could and couldn't do. She took a lot back with her to proceed, you know, to complete her work on the website. I think it's very close to online. Other individuals in other departments need to get to Amy what they want from their department to be on the. What they want from their department to be on the website.
Mm-hmm.
I suspect that it should be up and going completely, probably within a month or two.
Okay.
That's what I, what I think.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah, um.
It, when I was on it, when she brought me on the site, it looked relatively easy to navigate.
Good.
Which was, which was good, because I, one of the other websites that we were working on previously. Wasn't very user-friendly.
Yeah, well, I think that if, uh, actually, Linda, you know, if we want something to happen with it, I, you know. Keep us posted, or keep at it, right?
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, it, it would, you know, like.
That way it's gonna happen, I mean, if we, you know, if, that's another thing that just keeps rolling on and on and on, so.
Well, uh, don't forget too, uh, there was a, it's an extreme amount of work.
Oh, sure, sure.
To develop, and, uh, and gather the information, and, and then get it on the templates, et cetera, uh. So, um.
Well, if it takes that mu- amount of time, I, I don't think anybody has a problem with it, just as long as they, if we keep, everybody posted.
But it will be nice.
And it's gonna happen.
Yes.
And it's gonna happen, that's right.
It's gonna happen.
Great, great, well, thank you for that update.
I just can't give you it, uh, Amy would have been able to give you an exact date, I don't know, I guess we're live.
All right, the town office walkway, and Jake.
Okay, this is where we are right now, we did look at, um, a modular steel, uh. From the beginning, uh, handicap ramp from the side of the building here, um, it was very costly, um.
But that only went to the edge.
That only went to the edge of the building, so what we did was, we looked at having, uh, concrete, uh, ramped on. And what we found was that, due to the elevation between the building and the road where people would park, um. It would call for a walkway all the way to the, all the way to the road. So we're looking at a pretty substantial, um, amount of money. The other thing we found also is that the front of the building, the entryway here is in, um, pretty rough condition. Um, it was recommended, it was, it was, it was recommended that we, um, remove that, those stairs. They're just freestanding poured concrete, and replace them with a, uh, with a precast cement stairs. And eliminate that entryway there where it's not, really not safe.
There would be a railing on to.
Yes, um, I did speak with Casey about it, um, the concrete contractor, um, that's the only one that's had interest in it. Um, uh, has requested that if we were to go through with it, we would have all the blacktop dug out, removed. Have that part of the, um, the stairs in that entryway removed, um, by Casey, I spoke with him, he's, he's come over and looked at it. Um, again, it's a, you know, it's a pretty big project, um, it calls for some fill and some leveling in the front of the building. That also include, I believe, ten to twelve feet of sidewalk over to the church, to also meet, meet slope and grade there. Um, it's also gonna require railing, all the way.
Yeah.
So, so we're looking, right now, we're looking, uh, close to twenty thousand dollars for the project.
As we, uh, know.
And that's an ADA compliant, uh, five-foot wide sidewalk.
We have to, uh, we have to be in compliance, it's long overdue. Uh, we all realize that this is an old building, we all realize that we don't, uh, we don't. In the foreseeable future, know if we're gonna be here two years, three years, five years, ten years, whatever. Um, but we do need to have this, because it, we have to be in compliance with, uh, the American Disabilities Act, and, um.
And, and that has been postponed, postponed, for years.
Yes.
Okay, and now I think it's getting kinda caught up.
Yeah.
I, I, don't let me speak out of turn.
No, no.
We're getting, it's kinda, uh, hey, you know.
I mean, I really think we.
Wake up and move on.
Proactive on this, and, um, since there is only. One person that really, we, we did, uh, put it out to bed. We, we did, uh, we got one response, it's local. Um, so I'll, I'll take your recommendation, um.
Well, I think that, um, um. I'm not sure where we stand with the financial part of this, because it has gone from a few thousand to. Okay, uh, I think.
Well, wait, now, now, the, the, just the handicap ramp alone, the metal modular.
Uh, with twelve.
Was, was over twelve thousand dollars, just for the one little section here alongside the building.
I, I understand, but that was, that was the, what we ended up with there, all I'm seeing is, is, um, uh. We've talked about this for a couple of years, and, and this is above our thoughts of estimates. That's not someone else's, ours, you, you, the boards, as they talked about it. Um, the, and what do we have in our, um, you know, we only got like, five, five thousand dollars? Does that sound right?
Can't be too much more, you just remember, you've just spent some money paying them.
Yeah, so, you know, okay, now, um, but, we're up against the wall, I believe. It's something that we need to do.
And, and, and I think the longer we postpone it, just the more it's gonna cost.
Well, all right, so, what I'm gonna say is, um, to cut, try our best to keep this cost down. Uh, regardless of who we get, I would like, I would like to see our people. Do as much work that is possible.
Or grading.
Or that they qualify to do, or whatever you want, I don't know how to spell it out, you follow me?
Get it, get it, um, project ready.
Yeah, okay, or, and, and.
Which, which, that's.
And work with the contractor, to, to bring it to whatever hi- his needs are, okay, that would cut our.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, we pay our people anyways, whether they're working here or where, am I saying that correctly?
Sure. Jason, w- would you have a problem, uh, mentioning that to?
No, I can, I can talk to Casey about it, and I can talk to Kate, to each of them also.
Now, uh, with that said, I would like us, uh, to come back with that, and, um, I would like, next, let's next week. Either do it or not do it.
Okay, so.
And I think we're gonna do it, you, you, I think it would.
All right, so, uh, once again, um.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're gonna have the.
Are we looking at the concrete?
Yes.
Yes.
Way.
With railings?
With railings, the whole, whole thing.
You have to understand that, and the railings are, are to a certain spec railings.
Oh, yes.
It's two rails, it's, you know, they're the.
Upper and lower.
That's right.
To a certain height, the concrete has to be cored.
Okay, and, and, uh, and the gentleman that you're.
It's all welded, I mean, it's not an easy project.
Okay, just so that we all are on the same, um, um, line here. Uh, and the person that we're, uh, trying to put this project together with, uh, qualifies to know the specs.
Absolutely.
Okay, without a question, am I correct? Okay.
All right, so, I'd like to, uh.
I've all been answered, you, you follow?
I'd like to put the town office walkway on.
Make a decision on.
Well, next week, tell them, okay?
And I'll speak with, uh, Casey, and, uh, maybe see if there's any part that he can offer our services to, to lower, help lower the cost.
Okay, and, uh, if, I'll tell you, if it would be possible, and if Casey could fit it in, uh, maybe the three of yous people. Could get together so that we know where we stand.
Okay.
Because, um, I just wanna make you aware too, that Casey's coming into blacktopping now too, and, uh, you know.
Well, but, but we're gonna ask him that, and if he says no, uh, I'm booked, then fine, I, we'll, we'll deal with it.
I just, you know, I just don't.
I don't wanna force him to do.
Right.
Okay.
And again, this project, it's, 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 it'd be a coordinated project, because we can only interrupt, uh.
Oh, yeah.
One doorway at a time.
Correct.
Um, and again, he's gonna be involved anyhow with some of the demo work, with the front of the building, with the stairs, and that entryway. So, I mean, he already has some involvement in this already, but it, but I, I agree, it's a good idea, we could, see, maybe we, maybe we could offer to sply our gravel.
Uh, whatever, whatever we have, whatever there is.
Whatever resources the town of Powell can put forth toward this project.
We're gonna do it.
To lower the cost on that, we'd gladly work with him.
Okay, we'll have that back for next Thursday.
Good.
Okay?
Yeah.
Um, anything else?